Good evening.
Good evening, evening.
I'd like to call our meeting to order for the Benita Springs Fire Control Board Meeting for Monday, September 9th, 2019. Please rise.
We'd like to have a moment of silence for four firefighters across the US that lost their lives this past month. Dear God, we come to you today and we be of honor to those who've gone before us, who have given their lives this past month across the US. We pray, Lord, you will be with the families, give them strength and encouragement during this time. And, Lord, as always, we ask for protection for our firefighters, that you will watch over them as they serve others, and that you will just guide and direct them. We thank you for the blessings we have in this nation and this country, and for those who protect our freedom, pray that you also watch over them. Guide us and direct us in all things. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this evening is the reading of the tentative millage and tentative budget hearing. Secretary, please read that into the record. I think you have one in front of you.
This hearing is to adopt the tentative millage rate and budget for 2019, 2020. The tentative millage of 226 per thousand will be .87% more than the rollback rate of 2.2403 mills. The reason for the increase in the millage amount over the rollback is A) increased personnel, services, and wages, additional fire inspector; B) replacement of fire and medical equipment. The total ad valorem taxes generated from the millage of 2.2600 will be $26,759,625.30. Net taxes will be $25,877,244.29. The tentative general fund budget for 2019-20 will be $38,110,802.6. Tentative impact fee for the budget of 2019-20 will be $575,000. Do we have public input on the millage rate or the budget submitted for 2019 or '20? If we do, Mr. Grant?
Yes, I have a question to ask. I have two properties in town. One is an industrial property and one is a commercial, I mean residential property. The residential property happens to be the fire department millage tax will be four times roughly than the city of Benita Springs tax. The industrial property that I have, that will be approximately three times the amount of the city of Benita Springs tax for industrial property. I am wondering why is there a difference between the residential and the commercial or industrial? I'm assuming commercial and industrial are similar. So, that I don't understand. You would expect the increase in the millage would be the same.
I don't really have the answer to that, but I would say the assessor's office would be probably the place you'd need to look for that answer.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
We are here to adopt and approve the tentative millage rate of 2.2600. Adopt the tentative general budget of $38,110,802.06 for the fiscal year of 2019, 2020. Adopt the tentative impact fee of $575,000 for the fiscal year of 2019, 2020. We're here to set the final hearing date. I have here September 23rd, 24th, or 25th. Mr. Chairman, may I suggest the 24th for consideration?
Everybody okay with the 24th?
Yes. Therefore, we adopt the 24th for our final hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, you have to pass a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate, please.
We need two motions, I believe, don't we?
Yes, sir.
We need somebody to adopt a motion to adopt the 226.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we need a motion to adopt the general fund budget.
So move.
And the impact fee. It's all in one motion.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The 24th, and that'll be at 5:01. Not five o'clock, 5:01. Public comment. I have a card on agenda items only. I think that, Mr. Grant, you put Agenda Item 11B.
Correct.
11B is the renewal of our insurance.
No, 11C.
Okay.
Sorry, 11C.
As I see it, the biggest problem that the Benita Springs taxpayers will face will be their responsibility for the Firefighters Union Pension Fund. Sometime within the next 10 years, according to the Foster and Foster recent statistical table, sometime in 2022, this district will have approximately 90 retired firefighters of various ranks, each receiving not less than $110,000 per year for their pension until they pass on to the big firehouse in the heavens. Basically, by 2022, three years from now, the yearly firefighter pension will have an outflow of $10 million per year, which will be more than double of what will come into the union pension fund yearly from all sources.
Can I interrupt for just one second? I have a question for you. What does this have to do with the collective bargaining agreement? This is an agenda.
Well, this goes on. Okay, may I finish on? Okay.
This is strictly about the collective bargain. It's an agenda item. This has nothing to do with pensions. That's at the state level. This is just over the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, in the collective bargaining previous agreement, this was 2013 and 2016. The, on page, Article Number 32, it says, "The Benita Springs taxpayers would be obligated to honors, starting, quote, 'This agreement shall be binding upon the successors and assigns of the district and the union, and no provisions, terms, or obligations herein contained shall be affected, modified, altered, or changed in any respect whatsoever by consolidation, merger, annexation, transfer, or assignment of either the district or the union, or by any change geographically or otherwise in the location or place of business of either the district or the union.'" Am I correct that this is also in the present agreement that you're adopting this today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I need a motion for the August 12th, 2019 special meeting to approve the minutes.
So move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. August 12th, regular meeting minutes, 2019. Need a motion to approve those.
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. August 23rd, 2019, budget workshop minutes. I need a motion to approve those.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentations. Chief?
Yes, sir. The presentation we have today is for a lieutenant promotion, Andrew Riggenbach. I think he's here with his lovely family. Andy's been here for 13.5 years, 13 and a half, for those who don't do the points. He's a C-shift lieutenant. He's been an acting lieutenant since 4/16. And Andy's always a great guy, and he has a lot of respect from the troops, a lot of respect from the troops, which is why I'm very proud to acknowledge his promotion. Thank you, Andy.
Congratulations. I need to back up. I skipped the number seven. We need to approve the August 2019 financials on one motion. The current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts, and budgeted purchases orders over $10,000.
I will make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I apologize for skipping that. Commissioner's business. Let's start with Commissioner Maturro this evening.
Thank you, Chairman. I normally don't, oh.
Just one second. At this point, usually if everybody doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to stay, but we can take a couple of minute recess if everybody doesn't want to stay for the whole meeting. It's up to you. Everybody staying? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I normally don't have much to say, but I think this needs to be said, just what the district has accomplished, for those of you that don't know, and for those of you watching at home. I want to point out that this took place during the course of the last couple of years, but this is everything that's been accomplished by the chief, the administration, the guidance of the board. They've augmented the training grounds at Station 24 to become a state-certified live burn facility and a key location for county-wide training. They've entered into a public-private partnership with MCI to offer a state-certified fire academy. They've conducted a third-party comprehensive facilities and operations report. That's the Fitch Report. Some of you are familiar with that. Separated the district into two battalions, providing enhanced oversight and command response. Constructed two stations, that's Station 26 and 27, to vastly improve emergency services to Hickory Island and eastern Benita Springs. Purchased property on Strike Lane for a future station near Benita Springs High School. And if you remember, Chairman Lohan had a good idea to put a station up there, but that didn't work out. Approved a capital improvement plan to provide for future growth, replacement costs, and depreciation of equipment that the district needs to maintain. Purchased a second ladder, replaced two engines in accordance with our capital improvement replacement program, and added a light rescue pumper for Station 27, all of which, and correct me if I'm wrong, are all paid for. Yes, sir. Thank you. Placed a rescue boat on the water for immediate response at Station 27. Demolished and rebuilt Station 23 for essentially the same cost as upgrading the old station. Commissioned a 911 mural memorial park, and that's the Chief Daigle, Chairman Lohan Park, in conjunction with the city's downtown redevelopment project. Provided firefighters with two sets of bunker gear to help combat the rampant cancer problem in the fire service. Updated earpaks to ensure the firefighters have the personal protective equipment to carry out their mission. Purchased new battery-powered jaws of life and hazmat meters, which has been critical and directly linked to the saving of lives. And I'd just like to point out there, the firemen, though, you guys are pretty much state-of-the-art for equipment to help keep everybody safe and hopefully keep you guys safe. And we're committed to doing whatever's necessary to keep you guys safe and the people. So thanks for being on top of what's current, because there's always something coming along, and I like the fact that we're right on top of things, especially with this next thing. The redesigned of the medical inventory process to a paperless radio frequency ID system, and implemented a district-wide paperless asset inventory tracking system. It's a mouthful, but from what I was told by the chiefs, it's a fantastic asset to have and makes life a lot easier on everybody. Implemented a repeater system on the apparatus to enhance emergency response communication where radio coverage was minimal or nonexistent, and we just came home, those of you that weren't here, with an award. Can you mention that award again, please?
Yes, sir. We did receive an IT award for specifically that project.
That's out of the entire state?
Yes, sir. That and the RFID system.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations on that. Again, they've upgraded the fire reporting system from firehouse to ESO. What does that mean for us in plain English?
It's just an upgrade to what we use to report our, do our fire reporting for medical calls and firehouse, fire reporting.
Thank you. Enhanced administrative efficiencies with paperless digital staffing software. Awarded a grant to purchase a commercial rescue boat to assist with the ever-growing need to provide water rescue services to the community. Provided a mechanism to satisfy the loan for Station 27, which means we're basically debt-free. It's not too good to be true. That's the fact. And I just wanted the community and everyone to know that, that amazing job you've led during a time of unprecedented growth for the district. And that makes things tough, because you're going into the unknown. You guys did an outstanding job. I want to commend you with the negotiations with the union. I know you guys worked hard. I'd like to commend the board, but you guys really did an amazing job, and it's appreciated. And the public needs to know that, because we don't have any other outlet besides right now, besides these meetings, to let people know what's going on in their district. And we're in good shape. We're in very good shape. So thank you to the staff, to the firemen that risk their lives every day, the men and women, to the board. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your time, Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlechter, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Cassill?
I just wanted to again thank Andrew for your well-deserved promotion and hope you do a good job. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Murphy?
I want to thank Commissioner Maturro for outlining just the amount of achievements and the cooperation in this district for the very sensible contract that's coming up with the union. A lot of effort has been put into this, and thank you in particular, Chief, for your efforts.
I'm just going to add to that, that this is as good a department as you can find anywhere. Proud to be a part of it. We don't always see eye to eye on everything, but at the end of the day, we get the job done, and I think there's respect on both sides. I know there's respect on both sides, and for that, I'm thankful. Next item, old business. Anybody got anything? Okay, new business. Need a motion to approve the disposal of assets report.
So move.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the VFIS 2019-20 renewal, the insurance renewal, their motion to approve that.
I'll approve that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the final thing under new business is to approve the collective bargaining agreement from 10/1/2019 to 9/30/2022. Need a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, Chief Daigle, report.
Yes, sir, and public. The only thing I have tonight is I would just like to thank the commission and the labor team, the E-Board, for successfully negotiating this contract. As, just echoing what the chairman said, it's not always easy, and it can be tough at some times, but everybody has the same end goal in mind, which is providing the best troops we can get on the line for the taxpayer for a reasonable contract. And I think through the hard work, and as we said, it was difficult at some times, but I think we achieved that. And I just wanted to thank the board for that, and also the E-Board for understanding the difficulties that go along with that. So thank you very much, everyone.
That all you have, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Assistant Chief DeWitt?
Just a few things. Even though it's gone, I just wanted to give you a little update on Dorian, what happened when Dorian came close to us here.
No one wants to hear that name ever again.
I understand. I don't think the chief wants to hear it either. So, just to give you guys a heads up, you know, when this all started coming down, we started getting phone calls, and people started reacting in certain ways. So we grabbed a couple loads of sand from a local vendor, not provided by the county. We provided that. We had sandbags left over from the last storm that we'd had, Hurricane Irma and subsequent storms. So we had sand and sandbags. We handed out.
Media covered that pretty well, too. I saw that on television.
Yes. Yeah, we did a couple interviews. We were, I believe, one of two fire districts in all Lee County. We were the very first one, obviously, to start doing it with, because of our flooding issues that we have here in Benita Springs. So we were one of the first. We estimated, we gave out about 1,400 sandbags to the community. We already had like a half a load, quarter load here, and we did two full loads after that. Again, this was after, this is all on our dime and our initiative. So I wanted to thank the staff, because they were inundated with people coming in, people coming through the front door. If you've seen the news articles, we encouraged it to only be our residents. So they checked them in, checked for their driver's license, checked where they're from and what address. So I want to thank the staff for doing that. I want to thank Nicole Hornberger, who was running our Facebook page during the whole time over the weekend, because if you remember, this all started ramping up on Thursday and Friday. So we had a staff meeting and talked about all this and told them it was going to be this way. Nicole worked on the Facebook over the weekend with coordination with myself and the chief, what to go on, what was happening, and everything. So I wanted to thank them first off. Second off, just so the board is aware, we did deploy with Task Force Six. Eight of our members deployed with them. They left out of here Monday at about 11 o'clock, and they came back on Thursday at 9 o'clock at night.
I'm sorry, where did they deploy?
They deployed to Miami first. They went to Miami first until the storm went north of them. Then they followed the storm up to Orlando, and then when it continued north, they were demoed and come back home. They really never seen any action, per se, but the one thing that they did get, they were teamed up with the federal team, Miami Task Force One, Florida Task Force One, which is a federal team. And we've been tasked with them before when we went to Hurricane Michael. So we did valuable training. They had their docs on there. They did anything from suturing to show them how to do suturing, ultrasound in the field, and so we did some valuable training. So it wasn't just them sitting around waiting on stuff. They actually did training. And when they went to Orlando, they actually met up with three other task forces at the Orange County Convention Center. So it was a valuable lesson for them also.
Thank you, Greg.
And I think lastly, just remind everybody about September 11th, 6 o'clock at Station 1.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Scott?
I have nothing, sir.
And we have Deputy Chief Madden's report, if he'd like, if anything you want to add.
No, sir, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
For the record, let me restate the comment I tried to make earlier. As I see it, the biggest problem that the Benita Springs taxpayers will face will be their responsibility for the Firefighters Union Pension Fund sometime within the next 10 years. According to the recent Foster and Foster statistical table, sometime in 2022, this district will have approximately 90 retired firefighters of various ranks, each receiving not less than $110,000 per year for their pension until they pass on. Basically, by 2022, three years from now, the yearly firefighter pension will have an outflow of $10 million per year, which will be more than double of what would come in into the union pension fund yearly from all sources. At what is the 2018-19 Ashley Brown Audit, see page 73, the firefighter's ending net pension position, which a fiduciary amount was $70,800,000. Even if this would be increased to $80 million plus by the end of 2022, we can expect a shortfall in the union pension fund sometime around 2030.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments on that? Or do we want to let administration just send a letter out to rebut some of the comments that were made?
We can resend out everything we've sent before.
Thank you.
I just, may I, Chairman, before he speaks?
Oh, I didn't know you were speaking. I didn't have a card. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to point out that Assistant Chief DeWitt and I spoke with Mr. Grant at length and addressed this very issue. I was hoping that we put that to rest. Okay, well, I'd be happy to sit down with you again, whatever it takes.
Well, first of all, the pension money does not come out of Benita Springs Fire Department. It comes out of the pension fund. And our actuaries, and I'm not going to go into this because we've done it 100 times, but our pension costs are actually on the large downhill side. And by the, I think it was 2035, the projections from the actuaries, it's going to be at a break-even point for Benita, assuming the economy still stays the way it is. So the rest of the pension questions, 100% of the pension questions go to Tallahassee, because they send us unfunded liabilities. It's a state law. It's not just Benita Springs. It's every, every public safety officer and firefighter in the state, including teachers. It's all mandated by the state. We have absolutely no control over it. And to be honest with you, when I first came on the board in 2008, we were facing some, obviously, we were facing some pretty serious deficits, which we did early buyouts, which drove our pension costs through the roof, but it also saved us millions of dollars in salaries over that same period. We are now running seven stations instead of four, running almost double the number of calls by probably close to 4,000 more calls, with 17, give or take, 15 or 17 less employees than we had in 2008. And that's, the rest of this, the administration can send you again all the information, but that's the cliff notes. We're not in dire straits. We're not in, we're not in dire straits like you're, you're coming across to the public that we are. Thank you. Mr. Pure?
Yeah, hi, Ron Pure. I'm just responding to what you said, if, if I could. The state, in fact, is, is looking at about $30 billion that they questioned where it's going to come from, and I don't think there's any question, you are notified by the state that you owe X number of dollars each and every year, but I've never felt that the board has contested those numbers with the state, and asked for maybe a right realignment of the payouts that go not only to the fire districts, but sheriffs, municipalities, and counties, and, and those that retire at the state level. There are very, very extremely generous pension plans that are in effect in many areas in the state of Florida. But I just have a few questions, don't expect you to answer them unless you want to tonight. How many people are on the deferred retirement option plan, which is a bone that is sticking in the craw of many around the state right now, not the majority, but many?
First of all, I'll answer the fact, anybody in the drop program does not get, we don't pay pension money into, for the five years that they're eligible to be in drop, Bonita Springs pays no pension cost towards that.
Understood, but you're paying, but you're paying salary and picking up basically where the--
The salary would be, whether, whether somebody was in drop or not.
Right, but how many people are participating now in the district? Could you answer that?
I, I don't know the answer exactly.
Four. Four, okay. Now, what we're attempting--
Out of, I think, believe it's 100.
Uh-huh. Well, we're, that's not far from the general ratio, there are about 30,000 participants around the state on all, all levels of employment that opt in to the drop program.
I personally wish everybody was in drop, because then we don't have to pay any pension costs, so.
No, 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 we would all have--
And that's true, sir.
We would all have to pay for the pension.
So, you know, that's it.
To maintain it, and that's a problem with drop at this point, as, as well as--
We also, we also have lowered our pension multiplier to what is required by law. When it came here, it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was 3.68 or 3.6 something.
3.58, sir.
And we lowered it to three, which is the minimum. So our pension costs, you say we haven't done anything about pension costs, I'm, I'm going to tell you that we have.
Mm-hmm. Do you know whether or not the fire district is, is responsible for the 3% that those in drop do not pay while they're still employed at the district?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, drop employees in general, we've learned, for instance, the Board of Education, those employees that are basically rehired by the same entity, the Board of Ed, don't pay, continue to pay the 3% of their salary to FRS while they're working. Do you know if the district does?
That is correct.
If not, it's no problem.
That is correct, because essentially, a drop employee is retired.
Right.
Essentially.
Okay, that's the claim, but we know that they're not, because they're, they're working, and in this case, for the same district or Board of Ed or whatever.
Well, my feeling about that is, go to Tallahassee and talk to them, and I have on many occasions about the drop program, and it is loved by all politicians up there for the same reason I just told you.
Right, well, politicians are eligible in many cases, those elected, even elected officials, believe it or not, I think there was one that was sitting here not many years ago, who wasn't reelected, had he been reelected, he would have been eligible for drop as an elected official. So it's a problem we've got in the state, it's, it's costing us big time. You're paying now, you're paying 7% towards the pension, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Any further? Any further public comment? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you.